And you brought in Commissioner Lopez-Ledesma?
Yeah. That should be heard right there.
Okay, great.
So, hi everyone.
Okay.
Hi, yeah, Commissioner Lopez-Ledesma here.
Okay, great. So, welcome today to our special meeting of Los Angeles Unified Redistricting Commission for Wednesday, August 18, 2021 at 6:30 PM. We are doing a public input hearing in School Board District 3 to gather testimony on community of interest. Can we do a roll call, Andrew?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Let's see. Commissioner Hernandez?
Present.
Commissioner Hurtal?
Present.
Commissioner Lopez-Ledesma?
Present.
Commissioner Lundquist?
Present.
Commissioner Repenny?
Hi, I'm here. I'm sorry I'm not on camera, but I should be able to be on camera in about 20 minutes, but I am here and actively listening.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Antonio Sanchez?
Present.
Commissioner Wade?
Here.
Vice Chair Ambrose?
Present.
And Chair Sanchez?
Present, sorry.
We have 10 members, Mr. Chair, in a corner.
Great, and then we have an announcement about translation. From Andres?
Bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes en este día de hoy, a esta reunión. Si usted necesita interpretación en español, le pedimos que vaya a la parte inferior de la pantalla, donde encontrará un icono, un globo, o un mundo en la cual usted podrá escoger su idioma en español, y de esa manera se va a interpretar simultáneamente. Muchas gracias y nuevamente bienvenidos. Okay?
Thank you, Andres. So, once again, welcome to the public input hearing of the LUSD Redistricting Commission. My name is Luis Sanchez. I'm Chair of the Commission. I want to let first my fellow colleagues introduce themselves and state who they were appointed on this commission. So, once again, Luis Sanchez, Chair. I was appointed by School Board Member Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Andrea Ambrose. I'm the Vice Chair, and I was appointed by Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Why don't we go to Commissioner Hernandez?
Good evening, everyone. Commissioner Cristian Hernandez, and I was appointed by Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Commissioner Hurtal?
Yeah, Commissioner Gil Hurtado, and I was appointed by Jackie Goldberg.
Commissioner Lopez-Ledesma?
Hi, good evening, everyone. Commissioner Lopez-Ledesma, I was appointed by Council President Marie Martina.
Commissioner Lundquist?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Commissioner Lorraine Lundquist, and I was appointed by School Board Member Scott Schmelson.
Commissioner Repenny?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Heather Repenny, and I was appointed by Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti.
Commissioner Antonio Sanchez?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Antonio Sanchez, and I was appointed by Board President Kelly Gones.
And last but not least, Commissioner Wade?
Thank you. I'm Barry Wade, and I was appointed by then-School Board Member Richard Vladovic.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. So, now we're going to review a presentation on the commission's structure and process and redistricting law and criteria and communities of interest definitions. Welcome to the LUSD Redistricting Commission's Public Input Hearing, and thank you for attending. The LUSD Redistricting Commission is composed of 15 members, seven appointed by each member of the LUSD Board of Education, four appointed by the Los Angeles City Council President, and four by the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles. The commission has elected myself, Luis Sanchez as Chair, Ms. Andrea Ambrose as Vice Chair. To date, we have had 14 meetings to organize ourselves, establish our procedures and processes, and hire staff. We have also created two standing committees. The Outreach Committee, co-chaired by Wilma Franco and Elizabeth Johnson, and the Data and Mapping Committee, co-chaired by Ana Teresa Dehan and Barry Wade. The committees meet on a regular basis to discuss issues under the purview of each committee. This hearing is part of the first phase of soliciting public input in our work. There will be many other opportunities. We are committed to providing the residents of the Los Angeles Unified School District with full opportunity to participate in this process. We are holding seven public input hearings prior to the development of any maps. Once we develop an initial map and approve it for public distribution in late September, the full commission will hold a second round of hearings during the first week of October to receive further input from the public. Our final map must be completed by October 29. Once our map is finalized, it will then go to the City Council, which has until December 31, 2021, to adopt the final map. We are making redistricting software and data available to the public, so you may submit your own recommended maps. We also are making the information we gather available online through our commission website, as well as providing the public the opportunity to submit testimony, comments, and maps online. We encourage all LUSD communities and stakeholders to engage in the redistricting process so that communities have equal access to political representation. How and where districts are drawn can shape a community's ability to elect representatives of their choice. Before we begin receiving your comments, the city attorney will begin to provide a brief overview of the redistricting law and criteria that we are obligated to follow. That presentation will be followed by a member of our Data and Mapping Committee, who will explain the concept of communities of interest and how this information is crucial to the success of our work.
On behalf of the Los Angeles City Attorney's Office, we welcome you to this public hearing of the LAUSD Redistricting Commission. Our office's role is to provide legal advice to the city, including this commission, throughout the redistricting process. We would like to take this opportunity to discuss several important laws and legal principles that apply to redistricting. The Los Angeles City Charter requires the City Council to redraw the lines for the LAUSD's seven Board of Education districts at least once every 10 years. The charter creates this redistricting commission to advise the City Council on the drawing of LAUSD Board of Education district lines. The charter requires the redistricting commission to obtain public input, prepare a redistricting proposal, and present the proposal to the City Council. Several important legal criteria govern the redistricting process. The equal population principle. Board of Education districts must contain as nearly as practicable equal portions of the total population of the Los Angeles Unified School District. This principle is established in the City Charter and also in the United States Supreme Court's one-person, one-vote decisions. The United States Constitution's equal protection clause. The United States Supreme Court has held that race cannot be used as the predominant factor in drawing district lines such that traditional redistricting criteria are subordinated to the considerations of race. The Voting Rights Act of 1965. The Voting Rights Act prohibits voting practices which result in a denial or abridgement of the right to vote on account of race, color, or language minority status. Redistricting plans must be analyzed under the Voting Rights Act to ensure they do not deprive minority voters of an equal opportunity to elect representatives of their choice in violation of the act. Traditional redistricting criteria. Federal, state, and city law have established several traditional redistricting criteria, all of which shall be considered to the extent feasible when drawing district lines. What are the traditional redistricting criteria? Contiguity. All parts of a district should connect. Compactness. Districts should be geographically compact. Existing boundaries. Districts should utilize boundaries such as geographic, street, and political boundaries, and conform to high school and attendance zones. Communities of interest. Districts should preserve neighborhoods and communities of people sharing common interests. More information regarding the laws governing the LAUSD's redistricting process are available on the Redistricting Commission's website, redistricting2021.lacity.org/lausdrc. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. The city attorney has just provided a brief overview of the redistricting law and criteria that the commission is obligated to follow in the redistricting process. As a member of the Data and Mapping Committee, I want to share with you the current LUSD Board of Education district map adopted in 2012. There are four ways for the public to provide input into the commission's process. The first way is to attend a public hearing like you are doing today and tell us what you'd like to see in a map. The second way is through the public comment form on our website. The third way is to submit your map to the commission, and the rules and procedures for doing so are on the website as well. Lastly, the commission will be providing an online mapping tool to help the public draw their own maps. We will now address the concept of communities of interest and how this type of public input is crucial to the success of the commission's work. As the city attorney mentioned, traditional redistricting criteria consists of maintaining compact districts, drawing contiguous districts, observing natural boundaries, and respecting communities of interest. While the first three are easily identifiable, protecting communities of interest is typically the most subjective and controversial of the traditional redistricting criteria. The concept of protecting communities of interest is to draw boundaries in a manner that preserves communities that share common interests and that should be included within a single district for purposes of their effective and fair representation. There are many types of common interests that may identify a community of interest. For example, communities may share common housing patterns, urban, rural, or suburban. Communities may share a common culture or language. Communities may be defined by their neighborhood, their neighborhood council, or by the location of cultural, religious, or educational institutions. Communities may also be defined by the location of geographic boundaries or features, such as a city, parks, lakes, mountains, or freeways. Certain public services like public schools, public transit, the Los Angeles Police Department, or the County Fire Department may also help define a community. The commission will be using a wide range of information, including census data on income level, educational background, housing patterns, same-sex households, cultural and language characteristics, employment and economic patterns, health and environmental conditions, crime, schools, and other common issues. The commission will also consider city planning maps, school attendance zone maps of the Los Angeles Unified School District, transit maps of the Los Angeles Metro, and neighborhood council maps, as well as other maps and geographic information. While all of this written information is critical to the commission's work, so is input from the public. The commission has prepared a public comment form on communities of interest. If you would like the commission to consider a particular community of interest, we invite you to complete and submit a public comment form on our website to speak at this public hearing or to submit your written comments to the commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Dehan. We are holding seven virtual public input hearings between August 18 and September 1, before we begin the process of drawing and publishing a draft map. Every public input hearing will have Spanish interpretation available using the Zoom interpretation button at the bottom of your screen. We will also provide interpretation in 12 other languages if we receive a request at least 72 hours before the meeting. When providing comments in any language other than English, please pause every two sentences to allow your interpreter to interpret your comment back to English. Feel free to contact us by email or phone, and don't forget to check out our website and follow us on social media. Now, we will move into the public comment period of the meeting. Each member of the public wishing to speak before the commission will have up to three minutes. Please select the raise hand option to speak and wait to be called on. When we call on you, please state your name and the boundaries of your community of interest as an introduction to your comments. Once again, thank you for attending today's public hearing for the LUSD Redistricting Commission and for participating in this very important process. Thank you once again. De nuevo, para la gente que está en la junta, quiero oír esta junta en español, por favor. Oprime al botón abajo que dice "interpretation" en inglés, o está en la forma de un globo, un mundo. Ahí va a poder tener la oportunidad de oír esta junta en español. Gracias. So, I just said in Spanish to folks who speak Spanish that have the ability to listen to this meeting in Spanish as well. So, just, Andrew, it'd be good just to hear the, once again, the instructions so folks know before we start the public testimony section of this meeting. Andrew or Gladys, or whoever.
Thank you, Chair Sanchez. Good evening, everybody. In conformity with the Governor's executive order in 2920, March 17, 2020, and due to concerns over COVID-19, the Los Angeles Unified School District Redistricting Commission meetings will be conducted entirely telephonically. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment via Zoom webinar on the items listed on the agenda should click on the raise hand function to request to speak. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment via phone on the items listed on the agenda should call 1-669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1610774991, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. At this moment, we do have two members of the public that want to give public comment today, and now I'd like to turn it over to the city attorney for further direction for the public.
Thank you. So, I'd like to say just a few ground rules so that we have a fair and efficient meeting tonight. The commission shall provide an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on the agenda items for three minutes, plus additional time if the translator is translating. We request again that you, anybody who needs translation, only speak a couple of sentences and then allow the translator to translate. If it turns out there are a very large number of people waiting to speak, the chairman could reduce the amount of time, but it doesn't look like it will be the case. To members of the public calling in as opposed to raising your virtual hand on Zoom to speak, when it's your turn to speak, either an automated Zoom voice or a staff member will prompt you to press star 6 to unmute yourself. If you don't do that, we'll give you one other prompt, and at that point, you need to do so, or we'll move on to the next speaker. We might also, when we're prompting you again, read out the last four digits of your phone number, or if you're calling in with a blocked number, something like caller number 1 or caller number 2. We understand that you might be listening to this meeting on more than one device, a phone and a computer. If you are and you're on the phone, please keep one ear to the phone so that when either the Zoom voice or staff member prompts you to unmute, you hear it right away and you press star 6. If you are listening on more than one device and you're calling in on the phone, please turn down the volume on the other devices right away. When it's your turn to speak, between a slight time delay between the possible broadcast and then also feedback, there could be a lot of confusion if you continue to listen on the other device. Finally, well, two other things. So, you can divide the time, speak on anything you want within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. We ask only that you stick to the subject matter of this commission and that you not be overly repetitive. Finally, unfortunately, some members of the public abuse their First Amendment rights and use vulgarities or even racist language when they call in. There's not much we can do about it. Members of the commission have to listen to it. Members of the public, however, if you don't want to, don't hesitate to turn down the volume on your computers or put the phone away from your ear until the person starts speaking, and you can come back into the meeting later. And our apologies for that. We don't condone it, but again, we can't do much about it. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, we are ready to take public comment.
Go ahead and begin.
Mr. Chair, before we begin public...
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to make another announcement. So, during the public comment section, we will be showing what you see now, which is the Board District 3 map, and there is a timer in the corner of the screen. And so, that'll be the timer for the public comment folks to know when their three minutes is up.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. So, can we proceed with public comment with the first speaker?
Yes. Will caller with the name Jennifer Goldstein, please unmute yourself?
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I am the first speaker at the first meeting, which means I can't model myself very well on the people who came before me. I hope I do this. All right. I am a professor of education. I also was recently elected to be the education representative to the Encino Neighborhood Council. I'm speaking today for myself as an individual. The education committee met this morning to discuss this matter. We are submitting a statement to the Encino Neighborhood Council, which will have its general board meeting next Wednesday. But of course, tonight's meeting, as well as the District 4 meeting on Monday, which are the two districts we currently fall between, both of those meetings come before the Neighborhood Council meeting next Wednesday, where we will ask the Neighborhood Council to consider a statement to submit to you. So, I'm speaking only for myself because of the timing of that. I know you understand that. But I'll go ahead and give you my thoughts, which is that Encino, as I'm sure you know, has been split between District 3 and 4 since the prior map was drawn. It's in front of us. There's that little strip that belongs to District 4 that's cut out of District 3. The split raises the same issues as when we talk about redistricting for the city or any other type of government. It reduces our ability to act as a unified entity advocating for our kids in Encino and just in terms of the Neighborhood Council managing relationships across two different board members' offices. And that split isn't even, that one chunk belongs to District 3, an entirely Valley district, while there's this much smaller chunk that belongs to District 4, which stretches over the hill across a wide swath of Los Angeles, which we have no particular relationship to, or in particular, we're dwarfed by the dollars and voices on the other side of the hill. In particular, Encino's public elementary schools are assigned to Portola Middle School in Tarzana, Mulholland Middle School in Lake Balboa, Birmingham High School in Lake Balboa, and Reseda High School in Reseda. I urge the commission to create a map that keeps Encino intact and attached to the Valley neighbors with whom we share those school communities. So, I heard, conforming to high school attendant zones a little while ago, as one of the key criteria, we currently do not have that, nor do we have compactness with District 4 or respecting our boundaries, of which Mulholland is a key one. And we're split. So, thank you so much for listening and for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, caller with the name Matt Delazio, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I actually kind of want to echo somewhat what the previous caller said about just the importance of keeping the Valley together and not having our representatives be from so far away, looking, basically honoring the geography of the San Fernando Valley and having us connected to a board member who is centered, you know, in West LA and that general area seems like it inhibits our ability to really interact and have a voice with that representative. So, thanks so much for considering that, and thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. The next caller by the name Reyna Saros, can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much. My name is Reyna Saros Macahi, and I have the same concerns as the two previous callers. I am also a member of the Woodland Hills Warner Center Neighborhood Council. However, I am here today on behalf of myself as a parent of a child attending LA Unified. I'm here because I'm echoing the same concerns. We have two different board members, and as a result, it is very difficult for us to get any attention from either one about our schools. Our community is divided down the middle. Mr. Melboin has one region that goes all the way down to the west side, and Mr. Schmelson has the other side, and we do not see the logic in doing that because you're essentially dividing the Woodland Hills community. Parents who are sending their kids all to LA Unified schools within Woodland Hills cannot unite and cannot collaborate to advocate for our schools because we have two different board members, and this is unacceptable. This is disenfranchising the people of Woodland Hills, and I would like you to take that into consideration with redistricting. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. At this moment, we do not have any other more public comment.
We just have one that appeared.
We have two that appear.
We have a couple. There we go. Maybe we should remind folks, because I know we do have close to 37 attendees. So, maybe we should just refine folks on how, once again, how to get on public comment testimony.
Sure, we can definitely do that. Caller with the name Andrew Aguirre, can you please unmute yourself?
Good afternoon. I'm Andrew. I live in, I'm in District LUSD 5. And I was wondering if you could consider for the Silver Lake area to be not part of District 5 anymore, but District 4 or 2 due to the economic reasons between the... I personally feel like areas in that district is more affluent than the other parts of the district. So, made different concerns than the... If kids in that area may have different needs and drug... There is a district. That's all.
Thank you very much. Caller with the name Shelley Rivlin, please unmute yourself.
Again, all right, can you hear me all right, commissioners? Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you all for being here and taking my call. My name is Shelley Rivlin. I'm a retired administrator teacher with LA Unified and K-12 student. And I remember going through this when Steve Zimmer represented me 10 years ago, and some of our fears with that map have come true, unfortunately. I am on the education committee working with Jennifer that you heard from earlier. I am Mr. Schmelson's representative on the LA Unified School District Commission on Human Rights. But I live in District 4 with Nick Melboin representing me. I just want to reinforce what you've heard about the divisions we have of our students not being able to smoothly go from elementary school, middle school, and high school with the same representation. We actually have, excuse me, we actually have three board members representing Encino Neighborhood Council and our students because our Reseda High School students are with Ms. Gones. So, we are divided between those three board members. I would also like to point out the geographical obstacles... I would also like to point out the geographical obstacle of asking a board representative to cross over Mulholland from as far as Palisades Charter. And, um, the problems we all have coming through the four oh five or taking one of the canyons makes it very difficult, uh, for a board member who is south of Mulholland to represent all our schools in Encino. So thank you for listening and you will probably hear from me again on Monday. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you very much. Caller with the name Charnelle Blevins, can you please unmute yourself?
Good evening. I am calling for a different board district and that is board district seven. I am a, basically a lifelong resident of board district seven, a K through twelve graduate at LA Unified and currently live in board district seven. Um, board district seven bumps against, um, board district one right about the one oh five freeway. And, um, one of the things that is very interesting to me as someone who grew up in Carson is that Gardena itself has been divided between board district one and board district seven. I would love to see the every school that is south of the one oh five freeway, that is, that is southeast of the one oh five freeway be represented by board district seven instead of having the split in Gardena. I think that it would give that whole community as one, they are a, a very special community, diverse community. And their students in the north side of Gardena actually go to Gardena High School, which is in the southern part of the Gardena city, and they do not go over into Washington Prep, which is in board district one. And so tonight I am advocating that board district seven includes the whole city of Gardena and air, all the cities and schools that are south of the one oh five freeway. So that they also correspond with the local district, which is local district south. Um, that the board district, uh, since the majority of the schools in board district seven are in local district south, that the board district should mimic the, um, local district that it represents. And that is why I came to tonight's meeting. I actually thought it was an open meeting and not just board district three. But you will hear from me in board district seven and the board district one, um, redistricting meeting. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think we're happy to take your testimony at any time. So thank you.
Yeah.
And, uh, once again, uh, for members that just joined our meeting, uh, members of the public who would like to offer public comment via Zoom webinar on the items listed on the agenda should click on the raise hand function to request to speak. Members of the public who would like to offer public comment via phone on the items listed on the agenda should call one six six nine two five four five two five two and use meeting ID number one six one zero seven seven four nine nine one, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star nine to request to speak.
Muy bien, en este momento se ha dado instrucciones referente a si usted quiere participar en, eh, lo que es la aportación pública. Puede usted utilizar esta función de levantar su manita virtual para que de esa manera usted pueda hablar en esta plataforma. Si usted le gustaría hacer un comentario y está en teléfono o le gustaría añadirse, puede hablar al número de teléfono seis seis nueve dos cincuenta y cuatro cincuenta y dos cincuenta y dos. Y el número de identificación es el uno seis uno cero siete siete cuarenta y nueve noventa y uno. Al partir entonces puede oprimir lo que es la estrella nueve para que de esa manera pueda abrir el micrófono y, uh, es tener la oportunidad de hacer su comentario. Muchas gracias de antemano.
Okay.
Thank you, Andres. Um, at this moment, we do not have any, uh, uh, public comment.
Okay, um, let's wait a couple of minutes. Just want to make sure as, as we kind of just relay those instructions, people have, if we have any other public comment. Before we close the meeting and, um,
And we do. So, perfect. Caller with the name Alberta Moore, C R S S L A, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alberta Britson Moore. And I am a resident of Los Angeles and third generation LA U S D. Um, family member. I think one thing we have learned through this Zoom process is that space and distance isn't the same as it used to be. It used to be where we're concerned about getting across the freeways and things like that. That isn't the primary concern. I think everyone, uh, is capable of interacting all over the place. However, especially in this district, I think it's vital that communities are not broken up. Uh, that the primary schools, the middle schools, the element, you know, the high schools, there is a clear path with, of representation. And so I, more so than geography, uh, I think that is, uh, should be a vital concern. Uh, not being critical, uh, but I think the public would have loved a little bit more, uh, time in terms of responding. Uh, I know you're doing the best you can do, uh, but, uh, that is definitely a concern. My board district is one and I'll be speaking on Saturday in regards to it. Um, but I thank you for your consideration and looking at these maps. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Chair, would you like to wait a couple more minutes?
Yeah, so just once again, for the public, if anyone else is interested in speaking, please raise your hand. Um, otherwise we'll be closing public comments soon.
Mr. Chair, we did receive, uh, one, um, written public comment via email.
Uh, okay. Why don't we, why don't we read that? Why, why don't we read that now and see if anyone else raises their hand in the meantime?
Sure. Uh, and, uh, commissioners, this is the first public comment, uh, we, uh, received this actually on November twentieth of last year. Uh, and so I'll, I'll read the, uh, the text of the email. Good afternoon, everyone. Our elementary homeschool, San Jose State Elementary School resides within board district six, but all of the feeder schools for middle school and high school reside within board district three. Is it possible to add San Jose State Elementary School and the Mission Hill residents to board district three? Ms. Gones is a great board member, but during the election season, parents and community members are missing out on voting on board members, et cetera. That affects the schools our children will eventually attend or are attending. Thank you from Wendy Diaz, uh, Antonio. I, Lynn, she lists herself as a parent.
Great. And.
And we do have another, um, call in.
Is, is that a, is that the same speaker? Can I, I'm not sure how the rules apply.
Yes, I believe so. Do we allow to speak again?
Uh, we, we typically do not.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair. Perhaps the staff could read out the email inbox address. So if additional comments are available, uh, we welcome those through email and also potentially the phone number that we also have listed, uh, so folks can reach our staff.
Yeah, that'd be great. So, um, so if you all, Andrew, if you could read that out and then on top of that, maybe put that slide up again. That kind of should, has it all the information so people, if they don't get it, they can see it visually as well.
Uh, sure, I'll, I'll try to do that. Um, the, uh, so the email is redistricting dot L U S D at LA city dot org. And we'll pull up, uh, that information here for you. If you give me a second.
We did actually get a new, uh, Chris, public comment, by the way.
Yes, do you want me to go ahead and call that?
Yeah, yeah, well, well, um, in the meantime, Andrew, pull up that slide.
Caller with the name Candy Centiel, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, thank you for giving. I had so many devices working.
Yes, if you, if you could turn down the, the volume when all.
No, I turned, I turned them, I turned them off.
Uh, thank you so much.
I apologize. My name is Candida and I am with two organizations and I am a past student of LA Unified School District. And I really appreciated LA Unified School District because they had the R O P classes, but let's get talking about what the problem is. First, does, I understood from one of the previous ladies that each meeting that is listed is going to have a different, um, it's going to have a different, like, right now, you're only talking about district three, correct? Of the mapping that you're looking at?
But we're accepting comments around any, any, from any board district. So it was just a focus on outreach in this region, but you could, you could talk about any map at times.
Okay, then my next question is, um, how do we look at the maps to better understand the maps and going back to what the previous person, Ms. Moore, said? We just found out about this and I'm trying to get the word out to different organizations because I work with two organizations that, as a virtual activist, to send out emails about things that are going around in the community and we just found out. So we're just starting to be able to express the interest about what's going on with the redistricting. And then to the other caller who called about where they're splitting the district, where there's the neighborhood community is not, it, the school district is split, I mean, the district is splitting in the middle of the, of the, of that little district and it creates a problem where no one knows where to go to, to the last minute. So that was from a previous person who spoke. So right now, my concern is better understanding, uh, maybe a bigger, more time, more explanation about the maps. Because everybody does not know this. They don't know what's going on. Maybe more outreach door to door, flyers passing out at different places or something. I don't know. Like right now, I've been trying to get into Zoom for forty five minutes, me for at least thirty minutes. And I couldn't get in. So I called on the phone. Then I don't really know how to do it on the phone, so I know how to do it on Zoom. So it's a major concern. Bigger light. Huh? Thank you. Excuse me, I didn't hear what she said.
I think someone, I think someone went off of, um.
Oh, okay. Maybe that, I think that's how I got in because somebody else dropped out. But the real concern is more time, someone to better understand that what is the redistricting, where is the maps exactly, where it's going to split at? And how is it going to affect, like the lady was talking about something about off the one oh one on the west side? Where it's coming into both cities, I mean, both sections of the, of the district. And is LA, is, is the city gonna, is LA Unified District gonna mimic the city of Los Angeles redistricting?
Thank you very much.
I have some concerns, so I plan to listen to all the meetings.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Do we have other speakers? I know I have, we have a, uh, no, we don't. We have a comment from Commissioner Wade.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that clearly we need to, um, we need to explain that we are taking input regarding anywhere in the district and every meeting. So I think we should start off with that at each meeting. So tonight, uh, this is, this is our first run. So, um, and also we need to explain that them, those existing maps are just what is now. At this point, there is no proposed map at all. Let me turn my video on. There's no proposed map at all. Uh, so, you know, there's not really something for people to look at and react to other than here's the districts that we have now. So those are two issues I think that we need to include at the beginning of each meeting. And I think everybody who's spoken for, uh, bringing up some very useful points to us. Appreciate it.
Great. Um, Commissioner Lundquist, I, I know we have a speaker too, so, um,
Yes, thank you. I, I basically wanted to say the same thing that Commissioner Wade said, just, just reemphasizing that if you have any comments on any district, um, please feel free to voice those tonight. And then just, um, Mr. Chair, uh, you know, the three minute, um, limit for public comment is to limit the total time of the meeting, but since we have, um, plenty of time and because there may have been some confusion, some people who spoke and said they would, um, you know, wait and give their comments about a particular district until a later meeting. Um, now that we've cleared that up, maybe we could give people the opportunity to speak again if they wanted to and, and just allow, um, people to speak a second time. Thank you.
So, guys, can we go to the next speaker that just appeared?
Yes, we can. Caller with the name Antonieta Garcia, can you please unmute yourself?
Um, yes, hi. Uh, I am from district two. Um, and, um, actually, um, my comment is that, um, from board district two, um, is that who, um, since our board district member, district two, uh, Ms. Garcia is not longer going to be with us, um, I wanted to know, like, that, um, for that board district. Um, and also would like to make a request. We would like to have like a board member that's actually going to listen to all parents. And actually, when we write emails to the board member, that actually that he or she will respond back. You know, we need, uh, a board member that's more transparent and is equal to, to all of our.
I think we're having trouble hearing you.
Antonieta, are you still there?
Um, yes, um, did you hear my comment?
No, we really couldn't. Can you, can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, um, we, um, I'm calling from board district, um, from, I'm sorry, from board district, uh, member of board district two. I belong to the district two. Um, and I'm just calling, um, here because I want to know who, since our board member is no longer going to be with us. Soon we want to know actually who's going to be our board member for district two. And we would like to make a request that, um, if you guys are going to get a specific type of board member, that, um, we need somebody that's, um, very transparent and is able to listen to parents. And also when we're writing emails to the board member, for that board member to get back to us or not letting, or not even, you know, letting us, um, just hanging there without any clue or anything what's going on or as for right now that all the schools are open and a lot of parents have a lot of comments and they have been trying to get in contact with our board district two. So, um, unfortunately she hasn't replied at all whatsoever, or maybe she's just avoiding. But, um, for future, we would like a board district to a member that's actually, um, very, very open to all the parents and is able to communicate with the parents and listen to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next, uh, public comment speaker by the name Shelley Rivlin, can you please unmute yourself?
Um, I, this is a question. Have we, we, we had, I'm not sure if we could. I, I know there's a request, but we do have to be consistent around letting folks speak for a second time.
Yeah, that, that's up to you, Mr. Chairman. If you do it, um, you'll have to let everyone speak a second time.
Yeah, because in future meetings, we, we might have more folks, so that's, yeah, I want to, um, consistent.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I would at least recommend.
Future meetings, right? So, yeah.
Um.
So we do have callers that have spoken already.
Yeah, uh, we, we have a, we have a, um, Commissioner Repinning as well.
Sure. Um, I just, first of all, I want to thank everyone who has called in today. Um, thank you for caring. Thank you um, for participating and democracy and, um, and for caring about public education. Um, and this is our very first hearing. Um, it's going to be really the beginning of a, a very long, um, not a long in terms of timeline, but a lot's going to happen, um, during this process and we are at the very beginning. Um, and, you know, is, and I think it's been good to hear for us as commissioners to hear some of the questions and, and looking at kind of our presentation. and looking at kind of our presentation. You know, I, I think someone asked about, you know, what Board Members we as a Commission would be selecting, and I think it's important maybe to make it clear in our presentation that we're not, we're not picking Board Members. The, the, you know, the voters in those districts will, will vote. And that's how those Board Members, you know, the seven members of the, the LAUSD Board of Education get selected. You know, what we are doing is we are drawing the lines and essentially trying to keep the same number of people in each Board District. It happens every ten years. And as part of that process, it's very important for us to hear from the public. Especially about issues around how we, you know, make sure that we're not dividing communities and drawing those lines. So I just wanted to clarify that this, the, one of the main things about this process is the lines that we draw and how we, well, not we, because we're going to recommend these to the City Council. But the work that we're doing here is going to be a very important factor in how Board, School Board Members get elected. But that ultimately, the power to elect School Board Members rests with, with registered voters in those communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Repening. I also have a Commissioner Retado.
Yes, I appreciate the comment from our colleague Heather Repening, because I was about to suggest the exact same thing. After hearing the speakers, there might be some that are thinking that our job here is to select their new School Board Member and that's not what we're here for. So I think it is important to clarify that for the people that are listening. The other is that I'm hoping that everybody that's listening in understands that all of us are made up, we're all made up of people from these very same communities with the very same concerns as everyone else. We're, we're all concerned, want to make sure that the lines are drawn in such a way that people feel that they will be represented properly, that their children will have the best opportunities in schools based on the folks that represent them. But in the end, if, if anyone here thinks that we're going to please a hundred percent of the people, that's just not going to happen. There's so many people in, in, in this district that at the end, no matter what the final outcome is, even though it's the, the best decision that we can offer the, the decision makers. Not everyone's going to be pleased, but our job is to do the very best that we can. And the best thing that we can do is take input from everybody. So again, I appreciate the speakers. I appreciate anybody that's listening in. But please understand that our goal here is to do the very best that we can, and I can assure you. After meeting with some of the, the folks during the last few weeks and months. I'm very pleased with the group here. Everybody gives it a hundred percent. And again, we're going to do our best and, you know, again, continue to call in. Give us your thoughts, but I want to assure you that all of us here are here to do our very best for everyone that's listening. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Retado. I mean, and just as also another reminder, this is the first of seven meetings. And anyone could call up to any of them. We are going to be doing specific outreach in those regions to make sure people come out from each of those four districts, but either way, anyone could call to every single meeting and do public comment related to the overall map, their own district. I know that for, through now and September first, essentially, the idea is to gain public comment. To gain people's definition of what a community of interest is, how they want maybe the lines change from a previous map. To inform a process for us to develop and propose a map to the city by October, right? And then we will go back once again in community meetings to present one, one map or multiple maps. Community members also have the ability to also share not only communities of interest via email, but also could actually share their own map proposal as well. So that's just a reminder of like, you know, we want as much participation in this process. It's not ideal because we're on Zoom, but I also think hopefully this creates a different opportunity because there are lots of people that could maybe go to a hearing on the other side of the district can now join via Zoom. So thank you once again for participating in these meetings and I'm going to go to Commissioner Anandis and also I believe Genesis, you might have had a comment before too. So it'd be good, or maybe around some outreach stuff as well to hear.
Mister Chair, I just wanted to remind everyone, we're still in public comment and I do see a couple of hands raised and then dropped on the participant list, so I just wanted us to defer to public comment instead of making kind of remarks on the commission side if possible.
So, yeah, so we had one, we actually, there we go, we have two, so.
I just wanted to jump in to say the same thing, Chair and Vice Chair, in the future, maybe we can have these comments. We can start off with them at the beginning of our presentation, so we can allow for public comment and be mindful of everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we take these last two? Hopefully, if there's more, but at least these two. Okay, we'll do so. Caller with the name Maria Contreras, please unmute yourself.
Muchas gracias, Maria. Maria quería, well, now in English, right, let's change the channels here. Thank you, everyone. This is my first meeting with you guys here. I'm from District Two. And I thank you for this opportunity. I'm very happy and excited to be here and talk about these topics. It's something that's concerning to you and concerned, something that very concerning to us. I don't understand about the maps so much, but that's something I could learn later. What I do appreciate is a fact that I'm, I'm ready to learn more and the ability to learn more and ask questions and know how to access the types of platforms in order to make an educated decision. So I want to participate and just like any other parents, want to participate in the city in regards to these meetings, we would like to learn more, how to do this, participate in this kind of meetings. Procedo, Maria.
Muchas gracias, thank you.
So I've been a volunteer here for fifteen years. Several different events as a volunteer, I have been in the area for fifteen years. And I know this is the kind of event that happens every ten years in regards to redistricting. And well, we should all be here and be happy about the chance that to share what we thinking. And parents should be out here. I wish that there was more parents out here commenting as well. So these are, are positive steps towards wonderful ideas in the future. I know there's going to be great changes in the future and I hope to be in these meetings again and share my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller by the name Margaret, can you please unmute yourself?
Hello, good evening. My name is Margaret and I am calling in regards to Board District Two and Five. My area, my zip code is nine zero zero two two, therefore. I am representative, my home school's elementary is actually in Five. And the, and when it feeds into the middle schools, it goes into District Two. So that would be possibly a concern as representation goes from the students that go from my area, from elementary to middle school. And then another issue for myself I would like to bring up is when the Board District Representative Two. When it comes to funding, I know they always tend to have, say, District East. And the length of District Two goes all the way to the, my concern is that it goes all the way to probably downtown and, and somewhere past that, which isn't really the east. So that would be a question as to how our schools overall get funded. Because I do believe that District Two is highly dense populated when it comes to the downtown area. And then again, with Two and Five, it is split right towards the bottom of District Two, being Five is above District Two and then it skips down. And there's Five at the north and then Two in the middle and then the Five District goes back again to the bottom of the south. So that alone is really confusing for me to understand. I, I know it has a lot to do with the population and, and creating the, the boundaries. And then, let me see, so the elementary feeder to middle school and then just another thing in sharing about making a map as, as an attendee. In doing so, will we be given the information of the population as far as what the census? I mean, it's hard as an attendee to try to think about drawing a map when I know the maps are being made according to population. So is, at any time, I was just wondering, is that information going to be shared for attendees that would like to draw a map? And I think those are pretty much my overall concerns and comments, so I thank you for your time and appreciate the opportunity.
Margaret, can you, can you mention something specifically your feeder pattern? That way, because that way, there's, the part of the public comment and testimony is to know where recommendations around that feeder pattern. So what elementary schools are you talking about?
The elementary schools are, that belong to District Five, all the way in the east. Is, let me see, my map just went out of focus. It's shoot, it's Lane, Brooklyn Avenue, City Terrace, Ford Boulevard. Those all the way to the east and then up to the north, the I don't know, I'm not real familiar with the elementary schools in the north, so I'm not sure if there's any feeders that go from Board District Five into middle school and Board District Two at the north so much. I am really familiar with the, with the east, east. Those, yeah, then elementary schools that I need.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment.
So at this point, Gladys, seems like we have all the public comments, so I think we should close public comment now and then if we have any more comments from either the staff or Board Members, we could adjourn the test, the testimony for the public input as well.
Mister Chair, I just have one comment and that's in response to the, the last public speaker. So yes, the online mapping tool that'll be made available on the Commission's website will have will, will allow you to be able to draw maps online and balance that population. Those maps will be based on population as well as other statistical information you can use to build those maps. And we should have that online mapping tool up within the next couple of weeks. So so yes, you'll be able to draw maps and you'll be able to do it based on that population if you use the, the online mapping tool that's on the Commission's website. And once again, that, the Commission's website is redistricting2021.lacity.org forward slash lausdrc. Once again, redistricting2021.lacity.org forward slash lausdrc.
Thank you, Andrew. Genesis, you had a comment as well? Are you on mute? Sorry.
Great, never get used to this. Just had a comment with regards to outreach. I know there was some suggestions for potential partnerships. So if anyone in the public, I'm the Outreach Director for the Commission. So if anyone in the public wants to partner with the Commission or work with me to provide opportunities, whether it's on the education aspect to try to educate our community around redistricting. Or whether it's on outreach to try to get more parents or different stakeholders to these meetings, I love for, I love for that opportunity to partner up with any groups or organizations or individuals. You can reach me at genesis.goronado@la-city.org or also you can call me at two one three two two one two two four five. Looking forward to, to that partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a comment from Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mister Chair. I just wanted to also echo Commissioner Arbe's comments in terms of protocol for us as Commissioners from here and from the public. It's our first hearing. I understand that, but as, as we go through this, I'd love to give time to the public to make their comments and maybe we can talk about the protocol as well too, however appropriate for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no more comments from Commissioners or staff, I'd like to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mister Chair, before we move to, yes, before we move to adjourn, we've been advised by the City Attorney's Office to report, if we get a quorum at these meetings, that we should report any ex parte communications. So we should ask if any Commissioners have any ex parte communications to report.
Yeah, so do any Commissioners have any ex parte communication to report from the previous meeting?
No, but I do see another attendee's hand that just went up.
Commissioner Hernandez, that speaker has already spoken earlier.
Okay, so no ex parte communication. I think now we could get a motion to adjourn.
Some more.
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Have a good evening, everyone.